I don't know, I don't see our video, but I assume that we're up there. We good? Brian, live?
We're live.
Okay, so we're picking back up. Welcome back. Thurston County Board of County Commissioners's work session. We started this morning early, going through our capital improvement plan annual update. We took a break at 11:30, but we are reconvening and going on this session till 2:30. We were at the solid waste projects portion of our slides. And Commissioner Edwards will be joining us shortly and County Manager, he gave a quick interview to a news agency about Thurston Strong stuff. So Jeff?
Oh yeah, before we jump back in, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of other staff. It looks, this has been put together. April Lee in Public Works did a really excellent job kind of helping to put this whole PowerPoint together and the draft in your packet. And so I just wanted to give a quick acknowledgement to her work as to make this a smooth briefing today, so.
Good. I think it's going so good so far.
Yeah. I echo that. And just that coordination, one, Jennifer Davis and the coordination that she's doing for all three of the groups is really helpful. And then each of the people that are presenting, there's a lot of work that goes in just to try to have it be as succinct as we can and provide you the information that the board needs. And then all of our financial folks on the back end as well. So, thank you all very much.
On that note, Jeff Beckford, the solid waste manager for Public Works. Now here, of course, talking about solid waste projects for the upcoming biennial. As far as our solid waste projects go, they're basically designed to provide efficient, reliable, and affordable solid waste disposal and handling capabilities, as well as various recycling programs and disposal services. And of course, the programs here that are the projects that we're talking about is to provide for employee and public safety and our facilities' security. Again, for the employee and our, and the public operational needs and need legal and regulatory requirements. So, for 2020, really the primary project that we had was providing some replacements and retrofits to a number of our facilities, particularly some access hatches to wells, well covers, and other vaults. That was completed. It was out of the Work Waste Recovery Facility there in Lacey. And it's primarily for our infrastructure related to both groundwater monitoring, leachate transport, and the gas monitoring as well. So it was really, really simple. And that was what we completed in 2020. This current year, we have two larger projects. The first is our flare system upgrade. And really what this is all about is there isn't, landfills generate gas and there is a flare system that exists, but landfill is closed 21 years ago. It's now generating a lot less gas than what it used to when it was first closed. So the flares that we have out there are way too large, so they don't actually function so well with this reduced amount of gas. So we're taking those out and putting in a much smaller, more efficient system. So it will basically, we need to do that for, first, our permits and able to monitor that and to control that effectively. That should finish by the end of this year. It should be completed. It's underway right now. The other large construction project working on this year is SCADA system upgrade. And what that really is, is the electronic controls that you use to control all these various systems, such as your pumps, your gas monitoring, the leachate management, or wastewater facility itself, various monitoring equipment. Right now, that existing system was put in 20 something years ago and has failed. So we're currently installing a new system. It's much more upgraded. It'll be great for our staff that has to do, to monitor and control all these and be able to do it from one spot. Right now, they actually, actually have to go physically to many different locations. They'll be able to do this monitoring and controls remotely. So it's definitely going to allow us better controls of our systems and be much more efficient. And it'll tie in actually to some of the projects that we'll be doing in the future. They'll actually be talking about here shortly. And this, while it's going to be working on this year, this particular project won't be completed until about October of 2022. So it's in process. As far as for upcoming projects, for this upcoming biennial, the first one that I talked about is security, technology, and site improvements. Again, these will be at the Waste and Recovery Facility. We have, again, as I mentioned, landfill was closed 21 years ago. A lot of the infrastructure was put in place at that time. And you'll see this as a recurring theme through a number of these various projects. A lot of these, these equipment and other facilities are reaching the end of their useful life and needing to be replaced or upgraded or... So this particular project will be improve our connectivity, replacing outdated components for our security. We just, for doing our scale software, we just started to upgrade. Another hardware, including cameras, additional security cameras for improved security, fencing to help improve or keep folks from coming in from off-site. It's definitely necessary for our asset management to, again, to keep folks from coming in and messing with the materials there. All of the projects I'm going to talk about today, this recurring theme as well, our disposal fee funded, I should mention. And estimated cost for these projects, or this particular project, is about $1.5 million of a biennial. The next project is transfer station operations, facilities upgrades, and improvements. And this is, again, the Waste and Recovery Facility. And this is particular to, for the bit out there, the transfer station building, which is the structure where the waste is actually tipped in, reloaded, compacted, and goes out. We have a number of issues there, particularly in this one is, in the yard around that, it's currently dirt. There's a lot of traffic in there, it's vehicle traffic, large vehicle traffic. And for example, the stormwater is a substantive problem out there. We have a catch basin, but it's, it's really not functioning effectively. So right now, during harder rains, it kind of comes a pond. And again, this is, again, where the current operator, that area where they're working. So we need to fix that as well, some other infrastructure improvements right around that particular area. An estimated cost of about $200,000. The next project, and this is an interesting one, is the Work Self-Reconfiguration Public Tipping Area with new scales, scale houses, and admin ops building. And this is basically a rethinking of how we're operating up there at the Waste and Recovery Facility. Currently, majority of our assets and our operations are on the section of, over the, over the old covered landfill. Our inbound, outbound scales, our admin building, our shop, building where all our computer servers are, public tipping area, everything are built over old landfill. And thus, as landfills age, they start to settle. And we've had quite a number, and you'll see this theme that shows up in some other projects we'll talk about shortly. It's creating a number of problems. So what we're really looking to do here will be to move the public aspect, the public tipping aspect of the transfer station operations to the south, which is down closer to where it's a section of ground that's original ground. It's not, has landfill. It's where the HAZO House and the recycling areas are down to that area. Where we put an inbound, outbound scale, put a new public tipping area, new area for the yard debris and the compostables. So moving that down to there, where we, you know, this is important from, one, reducing our maintenance because of the, you know, you continue to maintain, but continues to have issues. As well as actually, we are looking at, particularly at the work with our population growth and what we've seen in the increase in the amount of solid waste that's being generated in this county. And will be, continue to be increased over the next 20-plus years. Our current facility is not designed to handle that level of volume. So there's two key pieces to this particular project. One is moving us off of that old landfill, reducing our maintenance costs. But the other large piece is having a facility that can appropriately manage the waste from here forward. And this is spoken to in our solid waste management plan, is that make sure we plan our facilities, you know, outward. You know, right now, we're basically hitting design capacity of the existing work at this point in time. Particularly on weekends, we're actually sometimes above typical design capacity of that facility. Again, disposal fee is funded and at a cost of about $12.5 million.
So can I ask a question quickly? So you said at times, you know, we're over the design capacity. What is the design capacity currently?
The design capacity is about 750 to 800 customers a day. I'll lead in the examples. On July 5th, the day after the, you know, we were closed on the 4th, we had about 1,200 customers.
Talking specifically about self-haul, the customers that throughput through the, into the facility?
Correct.
Not, not the capacity in terms of the materials on the tipping floor. You're talking about...
Right. You're talking about customer, managed customers.
Okay.
And I should mention, in this scenario, within this project, in moving the public down here, the existing infrastructure would still continue to be used, existing in and outscales, by the commercial haulers. They would still come across, and we would, we would separate the public, this is another key benefit. The commercial will be here and the self-hauler will be here. But now, they're both using the same facilities and they mix and cross each other all the time. There's a substantive safety issue related to that, you know, having those two interacting so much. Vehicles turning it right across in front of commercial vehicles. So by going along this direction, the current access where the public goes, if you go to the Work and you, when you first get there, immediately go to the right, there's a separate access road that you would take if you're going to the HAZO House or the recycling. That would be where we would direct all self-haul public.
I could step in for just one, one moment. So where we are in that process, so we need to come forward to the board for a more detailed briefing. So Jeff, we've got a couple of different alternatives. We're still making comments too. So we started with, I think there were four different options. We have narrowed down to two. And Commissioner, you've seen some of that through the, at the SWAC meetings. But kind of the more detail in the two options, those will be coming forward to the board. So you will have the opportunity, we will share and explain in more detail and visually be able to see as well. We're just not there yet. We've got some technical comments to make before we go back to the consultant.
So my, my next question's going to be in relation to the estimated cost of $12.5 million. Does that include the design and pre-design cost?
I...
Should.
I wish it.
Okay. But we're not...
Definitely we're doing the full cost of the project, so the total cost of that project.
So but we're not even at the pre-designed stage?
At this point, we're about the 10%, 20% basically, if they, to look at a couple of options. And they're just, at this point now, giving us some, their best guesstimate of construction costs. This is very early in the process, but we're not, you know, we don't have the full, it's not in the design.
But I think it's a rough order of magnitude in terms of just the overall cost of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
But it will get refined. Good question. It will get refined. Yes, we will.
Absolutely. Any other questions on this particular one? The next project is pump system upgrades and improvements, again, at the Waste and Recovery Facility. Now really, there's a very, very intricate system of various pumps out there and they tend to regularly fail. Just because, again, the hardware is very old. It manages both our leachate, manages our regular sewerage, and it is stormwater and our, the condensate, which is what comes out of the gas system. So we have a, this will tie into the SCADA system as well, I should mention, to control these things. So basically, we'll be, going to be looking to do a revamp on the whole pump system. There's a lot of, and if you may not be aware, all of our wastewater eventually is pumped out to lot. So there's a vast system of pumps in this facility and they're basically going to be doing a, and their, this infrastructure's aging horribly. So basically, it's a rework and we're in design phase right at this point in time. Estimated cost for that will be about $4.2 million to reconfigure that.
Jeff, on that issue. As you're pumping that stuff out to lot, are you possibly, I mean, you might pump it all. So maybe are you putting contaminants into the lot process that maybe in your new design, you can figure out a way to separate some of the really bad stuff so that it doesn't have to go to lot? Because your stuff kills bugs sometimes, you know, in the system. Really, I mean, if you think about it.
We, we work very closely with lot. As a matter of fact, they, they were just out at our facility last week. And so we monitor, we monitor the constituents at that regularly at our end, as well as they take random sample on their end to make sure it doesn't mess with their process. So so far, they've been, they've been more, as a matter of fact, I talked to their...
So they've never said, boy, it'd be better if you didn't have X in here?
And as far as ecology and the health department is concerned, that's the leachate, that's the best place for it to go. I did need to mention that stormwater, we keep that separate. And that does not go to lot. Storm, so stormwater, because it's clean. I mean, the only thing we want to send to lot because it costs dollars, obviously, to do that, is just the leachate specific. And the majority of that water is the stormwater, which is, again, managed in a slightly, in a totally different route.
Okay. Thanks.
The next project is transfer station sort line removal. And what this is, is when the transfer station building was constructed, they installed a, it's what they call a walking floor in there, which is basically, I'm moving, escalated of sorts, to allow them to maybe pull some recyclables out of it and do some sorting of the material. However, it hasn't operated, it hasn't been functional for quite a number of years. And really, we'd like to reclaim, just reclaim that space by removing that, installing a regular slab again, which will give us more room inside the transfer station building for their operators to move around. And as far as the timing on this, it's, the timing is good to do this before we have the new contractor that's going to start in May of 2023, have this done and fixed, so we can have full use of that building. Right now, it's eating up floor space that could be better utilized. And the cost to refix that was excessive. And for the benefit, which was not that much. So that's what, that's what that's about. And again, the cost would be about $200,000 to remove and then, and put it forward again.
Was that in place to keep the garbage clean that was going to China? Is that what the intent?
No, it was, because the garbage itself has always gone over to Roosevelt. But it was, it was seen as a potential opportunity to be able to pull, like, maybe pull cardboard or pull out their tires, pull appliances. I mean, very easily take back on that work out of that, out of the actual garbage itself. But it's in the area where all the waste is being dumped.
Where the compactor is located?
With a compactor?
Yeah, it's in that, it's in the building where that is, correct. But it does limit the space that they have available to work. So this will be a prudent. And along that line, the next project is the transfer station compactor overhaul and maintenance. Again, it's at the Waste and Recovery Facility defender and it's in the transfer station building. Now, having an operational compactor, of course, is crucial because it allows us to get the maximum amount of material we can into each truckload that leaves the facility. So without, if it's not compacted, then the amount of material you can, you can get away and each load goes down by quite a bit. With a compactor, you can maybe get about 30 to 31 tons per vehicle or trailer that goes out. If you use a top load and don't compact it, you're only going to get maybe 25 or 26 tons per load. So you're, you're losing four to five tons per load. So it's definitely worth it to, if you can move your material through much more quickly with a compactor. We have a compactor that's been being maintained. However, it's going to need an overhaul in the next upcoming biennial. The compactor has a useful life until about, we're expecting it's about 2031. It's just still out, but it's, it's still going to need to have this, this maintenance done. And again, with the timing, we'd be looking to do this shortly before we start our new contract. So the tipping floor being fixed and having the compactor being up to speed and maintained and ready to roll. And the estimated cost for that is about $960,000. The next project, site differential settlement repairs. And as I mentioned previously about all the settlement we have going on at the site. This is for various repairs around, around the facility. For example, at the current public tipping area, we're seeing some settlement where the tipping walls, the waste tipping walls are starting to separate a little bit. And of course, there's going to be various areas where either ecology will not allow us to have standing water. When you get that settlement, you start getting ponding. So we'll need to do somewhat much of grading, put fill, grading, make sure everything's draining and appropriately. So this covers the various number of items as far as for differential settlement with an estimated cost of about $300,000. The next project, the transfer station facility, second location. This is a concept that we're currently looking at right now and starting to work on within the planning phase or the site, basically the feasibility stage, I should say. And what this is, is when we looked at the possibility of upgrading the Dropbox sites, Rainier and Rochester, there was some pre-designed and kind of 10% design level work done. They looked at, what did we want to do if we wanted to add scales and, you know, new scales and scale houses and upgrade those facilities enough where we could have the larger sized boxes that they could then be direct haul to the interim mode versus having, currently, the waste goes from to Dropbox sites, they have to haul it all the way to the Work. They tip it, it gets reloaded, and then it gets hauled away and laid back down to the central.
And the big thing, right, that we measure, staff is measuring with yardsticks. We don't have scales.
Exactly. So it's, it's very inexact and we're not, and inaccurate. So we will handle that. However, the cost of that was substantive to fix us up to that level. So it is, you know, even prudent, we want to look at the potential feasibility of creating a new potential South County transfer station that would have the ability to, one, you know, to accommodate the growing. There's a lot of growth in South County, the growing amount of waste. We've seen huge increases in, at both those two Dropbox sites, in the number of customers and the number of tons that have come in there in the last year and a half, two years. So looking at that, as well as maybe might be, allow us to provide some new services, such as, at those two sites currently, you cannot take yard, you know, the yard debris and food waste. If you bring yard debris to those, they basically, it's garbage. Whereas if you come to the Work, it gets composted. So we don't have that capability now, but that would be the opportunity to provide that as well. So again, we're in, basically, we're looking at the feasibility, are there suitable sites that are, you know, that would, that would work? Starts transportation, zoning, et cetera, et cetera. And that process right now is still early. But potentially, again, this disposal fee funded, this would be estimated cost of about $6.5 million.
Questions on this?
As you're trying to develop that plan, recognizing that the traffic impact is a big deal up in Hawks Prairie, might you try to locate that kind of a happy medium? So maybe the south part of the urban core could also utilize that new area that you're talking about, along with the South County, kind of for an efficiency measure and prolong our usability of the Hawks Prairie area? I mean, I know you'd almost be building another site, but not exactly, you know, just...
Much smaller.
Yeah, be a lot smaller.
Facility than north. It'd be calling, we're calling a mini work of sorts.
Okay. So I mean, you're, you are thinking about possibly alleviating some of the traffic going to the north side.
Well, probably even the south of Olympia and Lacey would potentially...
Okay. So everybody, you'd be going from all directions to it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. A question popped up as Commissioner Edwards was talking. With the second location, with this kind of, a little bit off track, I guess, not really, not related to this, but would this affect the contract that we're currently negotiating? Having a second location because we were negotiating with, with the Hawks Prairie location. And it can be a topic for another day. It just popped up and I was like...
It's a good question. What I will say is that the contract and the language that we put in there for the draft contract allows for the ability to deal with these types of things. There's, there would be additional negotiations if something changes.
Okay.
Whereas our current contracts don't have that language in it. So we did think about that. It's a good question.
And needless to say, as we move further along with this, and it looks like, you know, there are potentially suitable sites. Of course, this will go through, obviously, a long process or, you know, through the SWAC, the board, obviously. So there'd be a lot more discussion beyond that.
Public inputting.
Absolutely.
Any questions on that one?
Okay. And lastly, basically, yeah, it's general facility renovations and upgrades that, again, we, our facilities are getting old. So there's, this basically cover additional fixes and repairs of our, our infrastructure.
That's a little piece, piece problem.
It's, it's a cost of problem. Okay. Thanks for breaking it down.
All right.
Any questions?
Yes. I do have questions. So looking at the project total, that's a hefty, hefty number. For this, you know, where do the funds come from? Is it, you know, are there grants available? How, how do we get to that goal of $3 or $4 million in, you know, in 2027?
This is all from tipping fees?
These are all from tipping fees, correct.
And we have them.
And I do know that we set a certain amount aside for every ton, I think it's $5, for every ton that comes in is put into our, for our capital reserves. Now, that's actually a piece of, that happens, again, everybody, we actually have been regularly set aside dollars specifically for to cover these types of projects.
This is a very, very wealthy fund.
This is possibly our largest fund.
Everyone has eyes on it.
And added up, if you stop touch base at the beginning, it was a concerted effort, really, to go through, upgrade all the facilities to make sure that we utilize the money that was intended to be...
We had deferred maintenance.
So and, and all that is really is part of that longer strategy because it doesn't make sense to collect... sense to collect the tipping fees and just accumulate on the end of fund balance and need to put it to work.
And in solid ways, the facilities in general are always really very, very expensive because of all the environmental controls and other things you have to put into them. So for the planning before I got here, and the planning was very well done, to think ahead of putting those dollars, because again, as this stuff is, it is getting old now. A lot of stuff is starting to get close to failing and needing to be upgraded and improved.
This fund balance is really with utilities, our other water, wastewater utilities to be.
Chair, do you have anything else? I don't know. As you progress towards that centrally located facility, think about what you did down in Oregon and plan for that possibility sometime in the future. I really think we should make sure that we acquire the proper property to do that, considering, you know, wind flow and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
There's a lot of things to consider on that.
Something to think about.
Absolutely.
And how are you doing on this new job? What, you've been here a couple of months now?
Yeah, coming up three and a half, I think.
Yeah, everything going good?
I think so. Actually, I'm enjoying the people I'm working with.
I drink better coffee now.
Yeah, I got the best, you know that.
In a couple of minutes, we can share what the rest of the board members...
Okay.
I was going to ask.
The burn the garbage business. I've always been a...
Oh, yeah.
Is that it for solid waste?
That's it.
All right. So Jennifer, can I ask, there's a chunk of this presentation related to transportation, and then there's the transportation improvement program, which is a separate presentation. Is that going to be overlapping projects involved there? Or how is that, can you explain to the board how, why we're doing it that way and what the connection is?
I can have my county engineer explain the dividing it up. Thank you, Jeff. Good job. Thank you. Scott likes to have as much time with the board as he can to give. He wants to show just how important it's at very close.
So that's a good question. And so what I'll be going through today in the CIP portion of the presentation is really just the CIP. There are projects that are in the CIP as well as the TIP. So when we get to the TIP, you'll notice that I won't go through the projects because I'll have just gone through that. So the TIP presentation will really focus on the transportation improvement program, you know, what it is, what are the regulatory requirements, how do we meet those? And they really highlight the requirements that we have for the TIP itself. But this part of the presentation is, just like solid waste and utilities and such, it's really focused on just the projects themselves.
And all of those projects are a part of the TIP?
They are, yes.
Okay. I mean, I have a transportation notebook that I want to grab and...
Okay.
Go ahead and start.
Might want to just make quick explanations difference between the TIP and the CIP.
Bring the...
So do you have enough coverage?
Big topics that come up. And then this is, it's like everything else. Every one of them.
So finding ways to organize.
I know, I keep breaking it down.
Awesome. Yeah, okay, wonderful. So I'm Scott Lindlum, I'm the county engineer for Thurston County. And the presentation that I'll be giving now, as I just mentioned, is the CIP part, just like, again, solid waste, utilities, stormwater facilities, and a missing one. Just like those programs had their capital improvement program, which is a planning tool used to lay out the next six years of projects and kind of a general plan on how they'll be funded, I'll do the same thing for the transportation projects. And then the TIP part, the transportation improvement program, that is a planning tool that we use in the transportation side, it's required by law for us, required by law for the county commissioners to adopt each year. So it's a separate, separate but related tool. The TIP is a bit more comprehensive and talks about not just capital projects, but it talks about the funding and it talks about operation and maintenance, talks about revenues, expenditures, our bridge program, also not just our six-year program, but our twenty-year capacity project list too. So it's a bit broader look. This CIP, again, is just focused on the projects. And as much as I like transportation, I won't bore you with repeating the same projects during the TIP presentation. It's a similar approach as we did last year. And I know you'd like to hear about the projects twice, most people do, but I'll hold up on that for now. Thank you. So again, what I'll be doing in this first part of the presentation is providing an overview of the projects planned for construction and starting to work on in twenty twenty-two. And these projects, again, are in the TIP, but I won't be going over those in that presentation. And just for your information, some little factoids for you, we've got a thousand miles, thousand thirty-one miles of county roads, three hundred and forty-four of those miles are arterials, and six hundred and sixty-five miles are local roads, and we also have twenty-one miles of gravel roads, in addition to a hundred and forty-four county bridges that are the county's responsibility. It's like, I think you're winning for me.
I am.
You are. So generally, we like to keep our roads in a safe and efficient condition, make sure that our community has a safe and reliable transportation system. The county roads, as you're probably aware, are probably the most used county asset that we have, used in our county, valued at probably three quarters of a billion to a billion dollars if we were to replace all that each year. We look at roads that are trying to meet the growth we have, the people we have today here, but also planning for the growth for the next, you know, six or twenty, or really, we look ahead, you know, as far as we can reasonably do that. So fifty years, a hundred years, it's hard to imagine what that will look like when we consider back in about two thousand, excuse me, nineteen twenty, our population was on the order of twenty thousand people. Now, about a hundred years later, we're significantly more than that. So trying to project out another hundred years, it's a challenge, but what we try to do is make sure the decisions we make today don't hinder what happens to the next county engineer after me and then twenty or thirty county engineers later. When we look at our projects, all of our projects really come from different programs we have. So we have programs for ADA that address ADA, the American Disabilities Act, Bridge Program, Culverts, Fish Passage, Safety, Maintenance and Operation, Pavement Preservation, and our Bike Ped Program. All the projects we have come from directly or indirectly one of those programs. So when we look at the projects we completed last year, we, they're scattered a little bit throughout the county, and I want to just touch on a couple of those. The Hundred Fifty-third Avenue Pavement Overlay, that was one that was county road funded. The next one down was really an effort to improve some safety conditions down in the southwest part of the county, near the Chehalis Reservations, the casino down there. That one was funded by the state DOT. We had a few Fish Passage projects, one of which, the Case Road, is funded by a STP grant to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars that helped support the construction. And finally, the HSIP grant was a grant-funded project to improve safety that included rumble strips and guardrails in several areas of the county. I'll discuss the Fish Passage in a little bit more when we talk about a couple of those Fish Passage projects. Looking ahead to next year, we do have a few, quite a few projects slated to wrap up next year. I'm not going to go through each of those, but I, again, do want to highlight the...
Wrap up this year, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
This is this year, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. So a lot of these projects are wrapping up or starting this year and should wrap up mostly this year, some will probably spill over into next year. But through all these projects, we're using money from the Transportation Improvement Board, the STP program, which is federal funding, City of Lacey is contributing to Mullen Road. We've got a Fish Passage Grant, the Bryant Abbott Grant, to help us on the Chehalis Western Trail, BRAC funding for the Rita Road Bridge, I believe that grant was one point four million dollars, Rural Artorial Program, and again, HSIP money. So it's a very busy construction year for us. Couple of these projects are already completed, a couple are just kicking off right now. Perhaps our big one, the Mullen Road Project, that's going to be wrapping up this year after a couple-year-long construction project, a very exciting project to improve pedestrian safety, improve mobility down in the Mullen Quarter, just on the east side of the City of Lacey limits. Looking ahead, now I'm looking ahead to the next couple of years. So I'll go through some of these and I'll keep it at somewhat of a high level, but I just want to touch on some of the projects, again, that you'll see staff coming for decisions or action in the next year or two. One of them is the Pacific Avenue Safety Project. We're actually planning to start construction on that late this year. That will end up with four pedestrian refuge islands on Pacific Avenue at Lake Lewis, Seahawk, Kenwood, and Ranger. Also include lighting, pavement markings, and again, construction that should start late this year.
Where does Lake Lewis fit?
Is Lake Lewis Drive, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, so is that the city limits boundary?
Very good question. We were just talking to City of Lacey last week, and there is an annexation that is under consideration for Lacey that will go, what's the, do you remember the eastern limit of that?
Eastern limit is Kenwood.
Kenwood, okay. So we are in talks with them to see what status that's in, and we'll make sure that if the city does annex part of that, that we're going to be talking with their staff about how best to proceed on that, so.
How best for the county taxpayers to proceed?
Absolutely.
There you go.
Next one up is the Houston Drive. This is our continuation of our Fish Passage Program. Houston Drive will be replacing a culvert, which is an existing barrier to fish. It's number ten priority on our Fish Passage Array. It's near Brenner Road and Seventeenth, kind of in the base of the, it's, I guess, just what, south and west of Evergreen College. Construction of that is expected in twenty twenty-two. Another Fish Passage project is our Little Rock Culvert, Low Rock Road Culvert. We will be replacing a thirty-six inch diameter culvert with a fifteen foot by nine foot ox culvert. It's very close to the Black River, just off of Low Rock Road. This is a project that we are also finalist in a grant for, for fifty-five thousand dollars. And one of the things we started doing a couple of years ago is being very intentional about asking for grants of what we found over the years. If we get too greedy and ask for the full ticket, we're not as successful as we are if we ask for parts, if we're very strategic about what we look at. There's some funding agencies and partners that we found that aren't able to or aren't interested in funding a whole project, but we've had a few bridges in the past couple of years for Fish Passage where we've said, hey, we recognize you can't fund the whole project, but would you be willing to buy a bridge? And so we've had, I think, the Nisqually Tribe and another grant, they bought the bridge for us. So it's been a pretty effective tool, and this is another one on this grant. And I don't recall which grant program this was, but it's been a great way to do it.
On that fish issue there, on that replacement, do you know how much new habitat you're going to open up?
I believe...
Based on that?
I believe this one is on the order of a mile.
Up above into that timbered area there? That's a private timber area, isn't it? Some big outfit? I'm trying to think, is that, that's not, I'm thinking that's not a regular private property, but a timber holding.
I can get back to you on that. I'm not sure the ownership of that, but it is some very high-quality stream system upstream, but I can certainly check that out if you'd like.
Well, I mean, I just always like to prioritize, the better the habitat development, the higher the priority list.
Yeah. And that's one of the considerations we do have in our Fish Passage Array. We look at a host of different things, quality of habitat, length of habitat or area of habitat, and are there upstream blockages? If we remove a barrier, is there another barrier, or is there a waterfall or another barrier fifty feet upstream? If there is, and that's not our barrier, we'll probably pass on that one and a lot drop a little more.
Is there a transfer station right there close to that?
It is, it's just south of that. This is the north entrance to that old pit. This is just a little ways north of that old entrance.
I think we're talking about the same property, okay.
So on these priorities, you said one is number ten on the matrix, so why not number one? How does number ten moving forward next year not one, two, three, four?
I have good news for you on that. We are doing number one with this file, which will cover me just a second. But it's a...
How does it happen?
Yeah, it's a great question because sometimes the number one project, well, say the number two project, because we're advancing number one, the number two project, there might be some reasons that we're unable to do it. So maybe it's that disgruntled property owner upstream is, you know, saying, no way, no how, can you do something? Or if we, pardon me.
No, but it's not like that.
You are learning back now.
Yeah, sometimes it's cost prohibitive. So we've got a project up on the Johnson Point area where the project would be incredibly valuable, but it's in a tidally influenced stream that would take it from a small culvert to an enormously long bridge through that lens, and it would eat up our Fish Passage funding for years. Another one is the Kaiser Road up off Cooper Point, tremendous habitat gain. It'd be, it'd be a wonderful project, but it would be millions and millions and millions of dollars. Not saying we don't want to pursue it, and we will pursue funding whenever we can, but if we were to put all of our eggs in that basket, there's a lot of other projects that we could continue to do. And if it took, I'll make up numbers, but if it took us ten years to get the funding for one project to get us five miles of habitat, we could perhaps get ten miles of habitat on other projects throughout combined. So it's a great question, and that often comes up a lot, why don't you do number one? Why jump to number ten or twenty? But as I mentioned, I can honestly say we're doing number one too. Okay, good. Road Preservation Program will be in twenty twenty-two. We've gone to the program where we are focusing alternating years, chip seal and overlay, chip seal and overlay. That way, we get more economy of scale. So this year, we're going out for a very, we actually just are starting a very robust overlay program this year, focused in the south part of the county, mail road, mail cutoff. Next year will be a big chip seal program, the year after that will go to an overlay program. So what you'll see coming to us in the future is, you know, again, the request of bids and all those, and we will be asking for the board's support for additional real estate excise tax funding for the overlay program in the future. And now I will jump to the Fish Passage upcoming projects. And here's where I really wanted to highlight on, I think, some wins that we've had, really at the urging of the commission. Since the program started in twenty seventeen, we've received over two point four million dollars in grants. And as I mentioned, we're finalist for another one at Little Rock Road. So we've gotten grants, we're funding from the tribe, the Nisqually Tribe, Sam and Recovery Board, the STP funding, and this year, the big dollars are from the Bryant Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, which is supporting the Spurgeon Creek at Ladago. Our ADA Improvement Program, this will be coming up as well. We'll be installing or upgrading curb ramps at Martin Way and Kingham, additional curb ramps at Martin Way and Kenwood, additional curb ramps and sidewalk at Martin Way and Neil, kind of in the, well, the Martin Way area north of Tanglewild. These were, these projects came from our ADA Transition Plan, which we completed last year. The project that we're doing here are the top priority in the arrays we have in our program about addressing sidewalks and curb ramps, so we're pretty excited about that. And these will also be using developer mitigation funds to support this. This one's county road funding, the next one, I think, coming up is...
Being you're doing county road funding, isn't that surrounded by Lacey?
This is, it is, Lacey is south, there's parts of Lacey...
Right across the street.
Yeah, but this is within the county cell.
And there, yeah, I know it is, but I mean, it's in line for an annexation, you might say.
At some point, I'm sure we'll be, I haven't heard of any annexations proposed for that area. Maybe at the elected level, you guys have had your ear into the wind. But, but as far as we know, at this point, we haven't heard.
I, I guess what I'd like to always have you pay attention to is if that's going to a municipality, make a deal, whatever that deal is, you know, pass back half or whatever.
Yeah, and we do keep in pretty close contact with the public work staff over at Lacey. And we have regular communications, as I mentioned, just about that proposed annexation on Pacific. That was a very good discussion, and the discussion was really, well, if this ends up in the city, you know, we'll pay our share of it. Then part that remains in the county, the county would pick that up. Do you have a question?
Can you take, no, can you take a couple of minutes to describe as to why we're required to have an ADA Transition Plan?
Yeah, so we've got, I'm not sure how many miles of sidewalks and curb ramps and such that don't meet the current requirements for, I guess, accommodating people of all, all abilities throughout the county. And it's very important for us to, whenever we can, to make improvements to those to accommodate people again of all abilities. And there is an agency in California, I think you're the one that told me about an agency in California that, I don't remember the specifics, but did not develop a plan or did not take action on the plan for some time.
Yes, it's, it's mandated by the Department of Justice.
Yes.
And it is important for us to have a transition plan. It will start working and addressing the deficiencies within the ADA improvements that we have. The, the city of Honolulu was, was sued by the Department of Justice because they didn't have a transition plan to address the deficiencies. And the Department of Justice put a timeline as to when they need to fix everything. So it more of a strategic approach from Thurston County's perspective to make sure that we're at least we are addressing all the deficiencies. So we show just in case that we are working on addressing that. That's, that's the backdrop of having an ADA program.
Any improvements that we do, that's a component that needs to be a part of it. So we look at doing, whether it's capital projects or it's maintenance-type projects that have, that's been taken into consideration, and there's costs associated with that. So the cost, I mean, it is a plan that it's over many, 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 many years, but we have to start somewhere. And so that's what, that's what we're doing here.
Are there no funds or grants available for, for stuff like this, or, I, I mean, for ADA?
Well.
As a part of capital, as a part of a larger capital project, they would, but.
And we did just receive two grants, two NHS grants to do pavement overlays. National Highway System, I'm sorry, they're federal grants, to do pavement overlays on a portion of Pacific and a portion of Yellum Highway. Part of the funding for that pavement overlay is to upgrade all the ADA ramps. I think a couple sidewalks, but all the ADA ramps in that area. So a requirement to make ADA upgrades is needed whenever you do a pavement overlay. Because if you imagine, when you're doing a pavement overlay, you're adding a couple inches of asphalt on top of whatever's there. Sometimes you grind it down, but you know, you can replace it back. But that will then trigger, that will make changes to how, say, a wheelchair can get up a ramp. So it will change the grids, change the elevations a little bit. I think that's the genesis of that. But a pavement overlay will trigger ADA upgrades. If we can get by with a chip seal where it's appropriate, that typically doesn't, because that's, that doesn't typically, it's not a structural thing, and the requirements don't come with that, so. Where we can, where we're required to make upgrades, we absolutely do. And then where we can take advantage of other funding, we try to do that as well. And anytime we do a capital project, again, we have to. Does that make sense?
And we want to do them, even on the overlay, just to get to that point of, we don't want the roads to deteriorate anymore either, so we have to try to find that balance.
Absolutely. Because, I guess, I think Commissioner Reddard said it one time, we're all just temporarily able to, I think you were the one that coined that phrase, because eventually we'll be needing that.
Well, that's because I'm in that demographic.
I haven't heard that term.
Yeah.
I thought it was very pivotal. Yeah. So Marvin Road, this was a project I believe you've heard about for some time. There's a lot of development out in that area. We are working to address some concurrency issues. One of the areas of Marvin Road, we've got a project is from 22nd Avenue up to, originally it was going to be the Pacific Avenue or 510. We did scale that back a bit to be, make our project a bit more competitive for grants. The scaled-back project will address our concurrency issues. It's the, the scaled-back version is from 22nd to Union Mills. That covers two key intersections that we've been addressing concurrency.
Can you describe the? When I was doing the board, I had to give it five times before I could make sense of it. Of the concurrency issues means.
Yeah, so imagine, it's really a matter of the ability of cars to get through a border or get through intersections. So the board adopt a level of service that said, that really said the amount of congestion that people are willing to live with. And putting it in, in, you know, fairly simple terms, I think that with all the development proposed and current out there, there is going to be too much congestion. So that puts the county on the hook to minimize that. The county, I guess, would have a couple options. The county could fix the intersections, which are typically what is causing the issue. That takes funding. The county could stop development and not send any more trips through, any more vehicles through that. Or the county could lower the level of service, say, well, we can accept more congestion, we can accept, you know, ultimately gridlock, we're not there yet. But, so the county, the commissioners set the acceptable level. If they don't want to change it, then we can fund the improvements or stop development. Again, that's not the very popular thing to do, and I, I wouldn't advocate for that. But those are the options the board has.
And those are not optional, those are like state law requires us to make one of those selections.
Yep.
We either formally say, it's just going to be more traffic, too bad, we lowered the level of service, or we have to make the upgrades, or we have to stop development occurring. And so it's kind of, these situations can kind of come to a head. And a lot of times, what I saw was that the ones that at least have bubbled up have been right on the border of Lacey in the county. So then it creates more complexity about how we work with Lacey to address, right? And we have agreements about, Ramiro got on the whiteboard one day and explained it to me about how we work through these issues with Lacey on concurrency.
Right, and also how we develop a program as to how we sell in trips.
Yeah, that's what I was sort of remembering.
And, 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 and that was a good program where we sell trips to generate additional revenue. And what we did is we allowed those developments to occur, so they pay ahead of time. They, they, it impacts relative concurrency. I don't know how much money we have generated out of that, but I think it's, it's funding most of those improvements already.
Yeah, it's funding quite a bit, and I don't remember how many, do you remember how many trips we have left to sell? 30 or so?
30.
And we sold about how many?
I don't know, it's a lot.
We sold quite, quite a few.
Sold, sold a lot, so.
So how does that connect to traffic impact fees?
It's different.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, because the traffic impact fee is, is, is located at the individual level. Business have as a traffic pattern. Concurrent is truly related to avoid having the board to put a moratorium on development. So in, in order for the board to avoid putting yourself in the position to put a moratorium on development, the setting of the trips was the program that we developed, the Public Works, to allow development to continue. And we receive funding and take the responsibility to build improvements. So it was more of a, of a runaround to deal with the, the concurrency issues. Because the traffic impact fees is just paying for just the pure impact, not necessarily for the level of service that you have established. Makes sense?
It's, I, I think it's a fairly subtle distinction for most people, and that's why I just wanted to, I wanted to hear it again. I assumed Commissioner Meehan wanted to hear it, and I don't know about Commissioner Everett, he probably knows it inside now, but it's tricky to understand.
It is, it is complicated. It seems to, we talk about the same thing, but it's, it's different competing interests. And, and for instance, history shows that putting a moratorium on development is not popular. There was a moratorium placed on the interchange of I-5 and Marvin Road close to 18 years ago, with the city of Lacey could not develop north of that interchange. So the state, you know, it was a concerted effort to rebuild that interchange. As soon as that interchange was built, North Oaksperry was developed.
Actually before it was done.
So, but really, it was, it was really that, that, that sort of thing. The conversation on Marvin Road and concurrency, you know, has been in books for some time, but it's complex.
So when you hear that there's concurrency issues, like that's a pretty serious situation. Go ahead, sorry. Oh, no, you're good.
Thank you.
The next one up is the Black Lake Belmore Bridge Approach Repair. So if you can imagine, there's, there's the bridge, which is the actual structure that is kind of separate from the road itself. The approaches are simply that part of the road that goes right up to the bridge, it approaches the bridge. In this case, we've got a bridge that was built 29 years ago. It's a 60-foot-long bridge that carries just over 5,000 vehicles per day. The bridge is in great shape, but getting to the bridge is becoming increasingly challenging because the approaches, that part of the road right up to the bridge, it's sinking on peat, which is really, really soft material. So the bridge itself is on solid material, but the roads were built kind of on the, on the pudding that was at the north end of Black Lake. So over time, for the past 10 years or so, the, the settlement of that road has been getting worse and worse and worse. And we've gone out there repeatedly to, you know, to bring the, the road up to the top of the, up to the bridge to make it a smooth transition from the approach to the bridge. But over time, then, the road keeps sinking, much like out at the Ways to Recovery Center. Whether it's on garbage that decomposes or peat that continues to squish, they keep settling. And it gets to the point where I believe it settled probably two feet or so over the last couple of years. So we've looked at, how can we address this issue long-term so we don't have to keep going back out and just putting more pavement on there, which makes the road heavier, which makes it sink more? We'll be going out there to put, I believe it's about 200 timber piles on either side of the bridge, going down. And then that will make a, a solid, solid structure for the road to sit on. The challenge with this particular project is because the bridge is in really good shape, funding to replace the bridge or repair the bridge isn't there because the federal funding where a bridge money comes from looks at the bridge. And we'd say, well, our bridge is in great shape. So as a policy-level request, this year, Public Works will be requesting REIT money to support the construction of this effort. And it will be, I believe, about a $2.7 million cost. We've put, I think we're well-equipped for the design, about a quarter million dollars of road funding. But we'll be coming to the board to ask for REIT money for this. As I mentioned, there's no federal money for it. So grant funding for this will be, we will look, of course, but it'll be incredibly hard to find if we can find any at all. And my guess is we won't be able to find money for it. So that will be a policy level that we'll present for your consideration later on. Another project you're probably aware of is the US 12 Sargent Road Roundabout in the Grand Mound area. This is a project that's been a huge collaborative effort between some local developers, the tribe, and the county. Washdott has been involved in the discussions as well.
Did, did they ever pony up?
They.
You did? I haven't heard this name, yes.
They have not, but I'll have a discussion with Jennifer about a recent meeting on that, so.
To continue the conversation.
Absolutely, yeah.
We continue to ask, we continue to have those conversations, they continue to come to the table and meet, we don't count them yet.
So this project, again, will improve the traffic circulation in that area, especially with the recent development that, in the Grand Mound. Right now, it's funded with REIT traffic impact fees and developers, including the Chahalas Tribe. We're looking to go to construction and be complete in construction in 2022. So we're right on track for that, which is really exciting. Another project we've got going out a little bit further north is on Little Rock Road at 113 Little Rock. This will be replacing a bridge, making intersection improvements out there, which will end up improving the safety in that, that part of the county as well as the traffic flow. We did get some federal funding for that as well, along with traffic impact fees and county road funding for that. Oh, right, there, great. This is one of the projects I mentioned that we did get some NHS, against some federal funding for pavement overlays in the ADA upgrades, as I mentioned. Like a lot of our pavement work we do, we add Kevlar fibers to it to make them last quite a bit longer. This section goes from Lacey city limits to Union Mills.
When you say quite a bit longer, how long is it? Do we have an estimate on that?
It's fairly new technology, so the studies are pretty limited, but the minimum I've seen is five to seven years. So the, the extra cost to add the fibers typically pencils out pretty good. And, and as Matt said, it is a fairly new thing, so over time we'll get more and more information on that. Yellum Highway, again, we did receive a federal grant on that as well. Exact same thing as the Pacific Avenue, just a different location. Johnson Point and Hawksbury Road intersection improvements. This will end up with a roundabout at that intersection. Be rebuilding the roadway, we'll end up making the intersection quite a bit safer, improve traffic flow in that area. Funding for that, we did get a federal grant, some development out there, and traffic impact fees will be supporting that project. And with that, that is the six-year list. And again, I won't be going through the projects in the tip presentation, so if you have questions about the projects now, might be a great time. But of course, if you have questions later, I'm always available.
Just to quickly, but maybe this is to Romero more than you, I don't know. Like on that roundabout that we're doing down there that the state's kind of crawfishing on, I guess is the best way I can put it. How come we wouldn't use traffic impact fees instead of REIT on a deal like that? Just to solve some issues about where's the money going and all that kind of stuff.
I think we do have some traffic impact fees as part of that.
But, do, do, I'm sorry, go ahead. There's, there wouldn't be enough traffic impact fee money for that area to support the whole project.
Well, maybe not, but it alleviates that deal of, oh, it's all going to the north.
The coming, the coming portion of, of is from traffic impact fees, if I recall well. As well, traffic impact fees, REIT, and developer. Okay.
So under the tip, is that where we're at?
We are under the tip.
Is that a different zoom, Ramiro?
The way my agenda was structured.
Let me check with, you need to check. I got it.